Your microphone's around? You got quiet too quick on me here, okay? I wasn't ready for that.
But good morning, Mayor.
(inaudible).[12.12][12.12](laughing).
Charlie, what's going on up there? We'll call this meeting to order. Would everyone please rise, please? And would Pastor Riley Grandell of the Gulf Shore Church please come forward and lead us in the invocation?
If you would, pray with me. Lord, we just come tonight and we thank you, thank you, thank you for the freedom that we have and the privilege that we have to be able to have an open meeting like this. Lord, for these are elected officials that are elected by the people and for the people. And, Lord, I just thank you that tonight you will give them guidance and direction, wisdom and purpose, and that you will have them focus on the common good of all the things that we need to do. For, Lord, we just give you praise and give you thanks for this wonderful city that we live in and for this wonderful country that we have. May your hand be upon the guidance and direction of all of our leaders, for we give all of this to you and ask your blessing upon it, in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Slacto, if you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Yep.
Councilwoman Martin?
Here.
Councilman Slacto?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Here.
Councilwoman Simons?
Here.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, cool. Hey, there's Martha. Hey. All right, we are at Public Comment on Agenda Items. Anyone wishing to speak at this time on an agenda item, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel, and I would like to know, what is the status of the $50,000 study for the library? I know that there was an article in the paper and that our District III County Commissioner, Larry Keiker, attended, but I'd like to know when the money will be released and when the study is anticipated being finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time on any agenda item, please come forward. Seeing that, we'll close public comment this time, and we'll go to Proclamations and Presentations. Charlie Strater, could you please come forward, please? I know, nobody here recognizes Charlie.[176.56][176.56](laughing).
Good sight.
Good to see you.
Is this your side?
This is... Yeah, I don't have a good sight, I'm sorry.[188.01][188.01](laughing). Show 'em your larded side there, whatever that is. All of you that know Charlie, and all of us, most of us do here, knows that Charlie's passion has always been things, all things historic or things archaeological. He's done a great job at the very beginning of the city there. We were so lucky to have Charlie and Colin and so many other people who are passionate about that, about preserving our history and fought passionately to keep the city on a path towards that. For me, Charlie, thank you very much for being there. Thank you so much for everything you've done for our city, and because of that, we want to show our appreciation. The community wants to show their appreciation through this certificate. And it says, "Awarded to Charlie Strater in recognition for your many years of dedicated service to the City of Bonita Springs Historical Preservation Board. Your vast knowledge, mastery and expertise," and that's all true, okay? We're not just saying that about Charlie, it's true. Expertise has been invaluable to our community. Charlie, thank you so much for everything you've done for us. Please give him a hand.[252.93][252.93](applause). Yeah. Charlie, would you like...
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the kind recognition, Mayor and Council, first off, and I'd like to recognize John Guciardo and Joseph Farber, who's not here today, for their assistance with the Historical Preservation Board of the City of Bonita Springs, a few hard-working members there. Also, I'd be remiss if I didn't put a plug in for the Bonita Springs Historical Society. A lot of hard-working people, it's a fun group, and the public can go on the Internet and see videos about our history and get involved in restoration efforts here in town, particularly McSwain House, and that can all be found on the World Wide Web at Bonitaspringshistoricalsociety.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that's a great website and a great resource, so thank you very much. Why don't you come over and we'll get a picture? All right, I'm gonna... We're on a first-name basis here because I can't pronounce your last name. Dan Ann Rudy, would you please come up here? With these small... Actually, we had that nicely done, right? Not at all. From the FGCU Small Business Development. Come on up.
And this is a proclamation for National Small Business Week. And whereas every year since 1963, the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week to recognize the contributions of small businesses to the economic well-being of America, with celebrations taking place May 20th through June 17th across the United States. And whereas Gulf Coast University Small Business Development Center, the SBDC, will celebrate May 15th through May 24th to honor the small business spirit of entrepreneurship throughout Southwest Florida. And whereas the City of Bonita Springs is pleased to work with and support the efforts of the SBDC. And whereas the City of Bonita Springs recognizes the SBDC, provides no-cost, one-on-one confidential business consulting, training and support to small business owners that promotes a healthy business environment within our community. And whereas the mission of the SBDC is to provide necessary tools for business owners and entrepreneurs to succeed in the global workforce in our community. And whereas the City of Bonita Springs thanks the outstanding contributions that the SBDC has provided to entrepreneurs and small business owners in Southwest Florida and across the United States to succeed and grow in this ever-expanding economy. Now, therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., on behalf of the City Council of the City of Bonita Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through 24th, 2013, as Small Business Week, and request that all citizens to support our local businesses in Bonita Springs. I want to thank both of you for everything you do. You've been a great help to all of us. We're really proud to have you as partners. Everyone, please give them a hand.[459.02][459.02](applause).
Ben, board, thank you very much for your support. Thank Carl, John, for the support of the City of Bonita Springs. Christine, your Chamber of Commerce has great contribution to our community, and we look forward to continued collaboration with you and all the small businesses. There's no doubt that getting small businesses to grow and succeed in our community as well as helping those start up in our community are going to be the force of our future. I truly think that Bonita Springs is the soul of Southwest Florida, and I've said that for a long time. There are many successful...
Say it again.
One more time. Not Ben Nelson, but the City of Bonita Springs is the soul, in my opinion, the soul of Southwest Florida. Thank you.[519.91][519.91](applause).
It's absolutely my pleasure to join this fine organization. I'm brand-new resident of downtown Bonita Springs. We had a great session this afternoon with the city administrator, Arlene, and we thank you. Our office is at Cottage One, and we will be there for many years to come. Come visit, we'll help you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Appreciate it.[548.41][548.41](applause).
Okay. I beg your pardon.[571.41][571.41](laughing).
That's right.
God, backseat drivers back here. Come on. All right, I'll read to you guys. No, that's rude. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, included the dedicated members of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and whereas some 60,000 assaults against the law enforcement officers are reported each year in the United States. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, over 19,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including 14 fallen officers of the Lee County Sheriff's Office. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the Police Week memorial service to be held May 15th, 2013. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Now, therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., Mayor, on behalf of the City Council in the City of Bonita Springs, do hereby proclaim May 13th through 17th, 2013, as National Police Week, and publicly salute the service of our law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation, and urge all of our citizens to recognize, honor and support our law enforcement heroes. And we're going to have this delivered to Sheriff Mike Scott via our fine community policing officer sergeant. Thank you so much. Please give him a big hand.[668.51][668.51](applause). Just another quick shout-out, just kind of informally about the Sheriff's Department. Every one of these city council members, all of you, we all appreciate our police, community policing officers. They're always there for us. They have made this community what it is from 2000 on, that community policing program with the help of the sheriffs, with the help of all these officers. Thank you so much. You have created this community. Thank you so much.
Amen.[703.23][703.23](applause).
Okay, council, we're to the consent...
No, no, no.
Oh, no, we're not. I think I skipped something here that's rather important. Christine, what did she do?
She...
Yeah, there you go.
She smiled.
Vince is like... Okay, accept the report? Oh, yeah, let's see. Let's go ahead and have a report from the EDC, and they're going to make a request here. Vince, how you doing?
I'm just great, thank you. My name is Vince Modarelli. I am with Naples Daily News and The Banner, and I am also Secretary of our Economic Development Council. Usually, our chairman, Rich Mancini, gives our quarterly report, but he couldn't be here today, so he asked me to, and I'm very glad to be here, so thank you. So I'll start off with our new investors in the Bonita Springs Astero Economic Development Council. Since our last request for matching funds on January 24th, we've received three new investors. Simon Properties at Coconut Point Mall has joined our investment group. D3 Glass has joined our investment group, and Off the Hook Comedy Club is now a member of the EDC. And so our total matching request at this time is $2,500 from the matching funds. By the way, that brings us to a total of 28 investors along with the city in our Economic Development Council. To date, the total number of leads handled by our EDC is 55. We have six confidentiality agreements currently in effect. Those are people that we're working with to help either relocate or to stay or expand in Bonita Springs and our area. Recently, recent accomplishments, a list of those, is one of our corporate relocation prospects actually recommended to us that we partner with Prism International. There's a 2013 annual conference that's going, and it's going to be held at the Hyatt Coconut, and so there's no travel expenses or anything like that, but we're going to attend this three-day conference. We're going to showcase Bonita Springs and Astero area in front of the nation's top information storage technology companies. And so we're going to get an opportunity here this quarter to showcase ourselves. We're working hand-in-hand currently with commercial real estate executives. CRE is the leasing agent at Riverview Office Complex and Bonita Bay Executive Centers. One of our hot relocation prospects are actually signing a lease to be in that area, and we're continuing to work with those, that leasing agent, to help fill their office complex and executive center. We're actively working on three projects at this time and continuing to facilitate the details of Project B, which is the relocation we're expecting in summer of 2013. We actively supported the tax rebate bill for the manufacturing sector. This was a call to action that the Economic Development Council took in conjunction with the chamber, and that was a successful bill passed in Tallahassee. The city manager and EDC executive director presented an update to the Morning Rotary Club on our progress, and we do take this show on the road, folks, so if you do know, we welcome more opportunities to engage the community at large in the efforts of Economic Development Council. And on May 6th, if it's not already on your calendar, we're preparing a ribbon-cutting event for one of our successes, the Growing Room Child Development Center, and that project creates 30 new full-time jobs in the Bonita Springs community, in addition to the planning, engineering and construction jobs that have been ongoing. So that's May 6th, and hopefully see you there, because I'll be there. There's been some great positive press. First off, on April 17th, when you unanimously approved the first incentive package, that definitely made the news. In addition, on April 19th, our Economic Development Council, the Chamber of Commerce in Southwest Florida Works, received some positive press in regards to partnering to help connect job seekers with the terraces at Bonita Springs. And so those are just some examples of the kinds of things that this volunteer forces is doing out there, and, you know, that's been over the last quarter since we reported to you in January. Since August 2010, the Economic Development Council has shown seven projects, taking advantage of the impact fee opportunity, allowing those projects to move forward. And so those seven projects occupy 29,714 square feet, and in your packages, we've provided a data set that has been prepared and maintained by the city staff, but for your information, is there. Additionally, we've included some use permit activity from city-community development, and that shows our 2011, 2012, and then the 2013 thus far. And so, again, in these numbers here, we will have... We're going to be speaking to you in July again, and then in September, we'll have our annual report. And with those kinds of numbers, you know, it's really early to speak to projections as far as, what, 2013, but perhaps in July and definitely in September, we'll be able to speak to the trends on permitting. As I mentioned, our next update to you will be in July, and September will be our annual report, but if you have any other questions of me today, I'll do my best to answer.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions? Martha?
Thank you so much. Congratulations. I think the county could learn something from us, because I think for like, under $125,000, we just got six confidentiality agreements, and there's a lot more expensive. So congratulations and thank you very much. Excellent.
Well, thanks, Martha.
I'm looking forward to them being unconfidential and cutting ribbons.
Right, right.[1119.33][1119.33](laughing). I think June is when we're looking at our next big unconfidentiality.
Okay, that's so exciting. Thank you. I saw something on the news today, which maybe you can use. I couldn't find a link on the website, but on Fox 4, they gave the list of the safest cities in Southwest Florida. Well, some of them aren't cities, they're just areas, like Bogagrand, Captiva, Astero, Rotunda, but Sanibel and Bonita were in that top 10. We were number six in those areas, but we beat out Naples, Fort Myers Beach, Cape Coral, Fort Myers. We beat them all, except Sanibel, of course. But that might be a lovely thing for you to use. And the other...
It is lovely.
Yeah. The question I want to ask was, can we track how the, what businesses have closed? How would we track that? I don't know that we can, and I have one more question.
Okay, absolutely.
The answer is, we have not found a way to do that. It has always been a difficult issue. You would hope that we'd be able to partner perhaps with FPL or someone who would know whether or not they don't have paying customers anymore in a particular space. That has not been successful over time, and so I just want to let you know, it is difficult. So when you see these numbers of 968,900 square feet occupied since June of 11, those are gross numbers. Those are people going in. So those are not net numbers, which indicate also square footage is going out. We just don't have the ability to do that yet.
Okay. Well, you know, you said FPL, maybe BSU could be helpful in that regard, since they're a partner for us. I'm not sure.
Perhaps, yeah.
Perhaps. Okay, and the other question is, I had a little email exchange with Carl and the chamber and me about finding... I had somebody who wanted to find some space, okay? So I referred it to Carl and Christine, and I got an email back saying, "Well, we don't have the ability to find space." Not like we're realtors or anything, but I just want to forward, I wanted to forward a possible, you know, partner in town. And the idea is that we don't have that database to be able to do that. So we found a partner who will help us with that, because I know they're out there.
To my knowledge right now, the EDC is currently using a local Realtor to assist with some of that information. Pretty much have a demand on that Realtor to do that kind of thing. Frankly, the city is right now looking at opportunities to find a system that is easy to use, it works for what we're trying to accomplish, and there's a meeting set up with myself and a representative of at least one company coming up here in the near future. So we recognize the need for one of us to be able to have that capability, and right now, the EDC doesn't have it. We're looking at the possibility of working on it.
Well, I would be supportive of having that in next year's budget if we find a program that's going to help us. Again, congratulations and thank you so much.
Thanks, Martha. Any other questions for... Yes, yes.
Do you need a motion?
Vince, D3 Glass, where are they located? What do they do?
D3... Oh, D3 Glass used to be Mr. Shower Door, and then they have since expanded their services to include all kinds of glass manufacturer, and their facility is on, in the Alaco Corridor.
Okay. How about the Comedy Club? I assume that's...
The Comedy Club's in process of looking at a possibility of moving into our area.
Oh, cool.
They haven't moved yet?
Not that I know of.
Okay. I've never seen anything in newspapers or anything like that.
Well, it's my job to sell them advertising, and I'm hoping that they'll buy an ad from me and let us know.
Well, it's certainly, as we all know, this area is going to be doing real well this year, and I don't see any change in that. At least, I'd always welcome to talk to the council about that if I saw something that was less than good, but I'd have to say that the overall situation with the help of the EDC, obviously, is excellent, and we're going to have a great year.
Good.
Sure are.
Thank you, Bill. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to...
So move to match 2,500.
And there's a motion to second to match 2,500. Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Before we leave, I got to say, it's been a real pleasure to be able to see the EDC, our staff, the Horizon Council, all work together, everybody working, you know, towards some of these really large projects that have been going on and been talked about. It's amazing. I mean, everybody, I mean, there are some bumps here and there in the road, which there always is when you get some groups together about how to, you know, who's going to do what, but I got to tell you, it's been an amazing thing. Thank you very much for all your hard work. And Christine, thank you very much, and Carl, thank you for you guys, the way you work together. Thank you so much. You'd be proud of them.
It's confidentiality, it's who can...
Carl, just like to point of clarification, as you know, Arlene is working with the EDC. If we know somebody that wants extra space and all that, should we be contacting you directly, Arlene, or no preference?
You can, you can contact, and that's one of the good things about our system, you are welcome in Bonita through any number of doors, all right? So you can contact me, can contact Arlene, contact Christine. We all end up talking about the same people anyway, so whichever door they want to come through, they're welcome.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vince. Thank you so much.[1508.01][1508.01](applause). Okay, we are to the consent agenda. Counsel, do you have anything? We have a real whopper there. It's like, there's two of them on there.[1519.15][1519.15](laughing).
Move to approve.
Okay, move to approve. Motion to second. Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Councilman Slacto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, we are to the first reading of the following ordinance, and there is no public comment on this one.
Yes, thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, to repeal Bonita Springs Ordinance Number 04008, an ordinance related to the collection of state and national criminal history information on employees, providing for an effective date. This is a first reading of a regular ordinance, so there is no public comment. The ordinance will be scheduled on May 15th, 2013, in these chambers at 9 o'clock AM for its second reading and public hearing.
Okay. Good. Any questions, counsel? Is there a motion to send to a second reading?
So moved.
We got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to second. Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
No.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slacto?
Aye.
Okay. Audrey, do you have anything else under that?
Not under hearings.
Okay, good. We will go briefly to public comment here. Any member of the public wishing to speak on any item at all, come on forward.
Yes, Rick Steinmeier. I guess I should have spoke before you talked about it, but this, the pollution, it would certainly be a help if the city had more drop-offs for hazardous waste, paints, tires, light bulbs, batteries and stuff, more than maybe once or twice a year that we have. I don't know offhand where I would have to go to drop off my little hearing aid battery. It'd be a waste, it'd take a lot of time and gasoline to drive to these drop-off places. If we could make a permanent place or a more regular Saturday, every first Saturday of the month or something, it would, I think it would help the people conform with the needs of our landfills. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good idea.
Hi, Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel. At one time, we knew we had 1.5 million vacant square feet of commercial properties. We know it's down to 700-something. Therefore, there is a list somewhere of where these properties are. We just have to probably go back to the source of that original list and find out how that was compiled. The other thing is, I want to thank the city from the bottom of my heart for its support for the Bonita Springs Fire District's bid to become licensed as emergency medical transport. Likewise, I want to put you on notice that Jim Nathan spoke out against the Bonita Springs Fire District efforts to become emergency medical transport, and I'm hearing things on the street that they're not going to support the hospital because he did not support the fire district. The other thing I heard on the street is the workforce housing is being brought up again, and that should have died when Jay Aaron got out of office. These things are obsolete and they are not needed in the DRGR. Another thing we need to be aware of is, as much as I appreciate Bonita Assistance Office, and you all know that I really do appreciate them, they are growing and in effect becoming a welfare hub. We must keep a close eye that we do not have things too centralized and cause an area to go down in value and in safety. One, two, three, four, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening. Kathy McGrath with the good news. I'm speaking, first of all, as a member, honored member of the Special Events Committee, and I'm not going to just talk about, celebrate Bonita. We all know how great that was, but what I want everyone to know, all of you especially, is how great the Parks and Recreation Crew was. I got there at 10 o'clock that morning, and I knew they were there a good three hours before that. I left at 10:00, and they were still there till midnight. And I know, yeah, it's their job, they get paid, but they're above and beyond, and I, it's not only how they treat me if I need anything, it's watching how they are. years before she stepped in Arlene's shoes. And in this last year, she has matured and grown her confidence, the way she handles things, she's super. She needs a pat on the back. Okay, the next thing I want to tell you about is Riverwalk. And if you haven't been to the end of Kent Road, they're working, and seen what they have done with the Shell Path, the Boardwalk, and now, I was there on Saturday, the dock is there, the canoe kayak dock, Janet and Cullum, and I walked it about six weeks ago, and the dock wasn't in yet. It's in now. And it goes all the way to Mount Benita. You can go into Nature Place, and it can go west. Of course, right now, it stops at I-75, but eventually, it'll go under there and to Oakland Park. So, that is just wonderful. And Cullum worked for fourteen years on that. We also have to thank former Commissioner Ray Judah, who was very, very cooperative with that. All right? The next, I would just want to bring a little update on the film fest that Antonio from Benita TV had suggested. We are working on it. Patrick's working on the flyer. I can't give you a whole lot of information yet, except the basic thing is, anyone can enter their video, fifteen minutes in length, on any subject, but it has to be filmed at Nature Place. And I believe the deadline is going to be next January, and the award ceremony, à la Academy Award red carpet, will be next April. So, just put your thinking caps on. And hazardous waste, there is a wonderful hazardous waste, but of course, it is in Fort Myers. It's open every day. You just drive up, give them the zip code and off, but as Rick says, it would be nice if there was something here. And finally, my final thing, let's see if Madam Simon knows this one. Two weeks ago, I told you that little comment, optimist pessimist. I found another one in Reader's Digest, as Jay Leno would say, my bible.
They still print that?
Oh, yes. My mother sends me every Christmas.
Well, I guess he put me in my place. Yes, I'm old. All right. Here we go. This is going to, this, I think it's going to surprise you. Quote, "I prefer to believe the best of everybody. It saves so much trouble."
There you go.
Rudyard Kipling.
That's a surprise.
Oh, that guy.
He's older than me.
He's smart.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Yep, okay. That's public comment. And then, we are to the City Attorney's Report, and again, what do you got for us, Audrey?
Thank you. You have a mediated settlement agreement with Stallion Group. This is on the shangri-la drainage improvements for phase two. The green sheet is, along with the mediated settlement, does pretty much lay out what the terms were. John Gucciardi was there as the representative to negotiate the mediation. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. All right. Counsel, do you have any questions about the terms of the agreement? Audrey, does this pretty much wrap this up so far as shangri-la, or do we have more work to do?
This is on the drainage, which was the second phase. The next phase is the roadway.
How does that, how is that going?
We have one mediation scheduled, we have about two or three more. We do have all the property acquired, but that's step one. After the acquisition of the property, we have to pay the property owners that we have not paid yet. So, that is still going on, and that could, like this case, it could take a while. It's up to the property owner to advance after we put money in the court registry to deal with us on those issues.
So far as the easement acquisition for it, so we can...
All the easements are received.
All the easements are received, so we're in pretty good shape. When do you expect to be able to go to bid and to go ahead and get started with that? Do you have a guest estimate at all?
Actually, within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Good.
We're fine tuning the bid language right now, and as soon as we get that version in, we'll be going forward.
Possibility for going to construction this summer sometime?
That may depend on who actually gets the bid and what kind of arrangement we come with them. We may, in fact, give them enough time so that, depending on what other work they have and need to complete, again, that's going to depend on who it is, they may not start during rainy season.
That probably isn't a good idea.
Right. But it'll all be factored in.
Yeah, in that particular area. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Number six, John. City will pay, is that in addition to the hundred thousand or included in it?
No, that's in addition to the hundred thousand, goes to the property owner. Then, item six indicates the breakdown that went to the experts.
Okay, another twenty thousand. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? What's your pleasure?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, do you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
Okay, we are up to the City Manager's Report. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
How are you doing?
I'm doing well, sir. Thank you very much for asking. Item A is the discussion and direction regarding the appointment of, excuse me, sir? No.
They're up there gaffing me.
Okay. The Lee County Restore Act Advisory Committee and appointing a member to that, a non-elected person. Two names have been put forward previously, Mr. Ferrara and Mr. Rumbold. We have not received any additional nominations from council members, and we're hoping you will make that decision tonight, so that we can go ahead and advise the county in time, according to their deadline. We're about a week away from deadline on that.
Okay. Discussion, counsel?
Yes.
Yes?
While I just love Councilman Ferrara, he's not here the whole year long, so that would be a concern of mine, and I just want to put that forward.
Yeah.
Yes.
I've spoken with Councilman Ferrara. He recognizes that could be a problem. The, but I think the value he brings, having city council experience, the involvement he's had with the waterways in the city, and assuring that we can keep, keep what we have and maintain it and improve it, I think he's a, he's a good candidate. So, I guess it's up to counsel. I think that Councilman Ferrara will make every opportunity, make every effort to be in those meetings, and I would support him.
Okay. And any other comment before we, yes?
Stephen, by the way, how many, how long has he gone? It doesn't seem like it's been that.
No, he's typically gone four months.
Four months?
But he's, when he was on council, he came back, made council meetings, and he's back and forth.
He's expressed a desire to do this?
Yes, he has. I've spoken with him personally.
Okay. And you spoke to Darren?
Chair did. Yeah, he'd be willing to serve.
Okay. Well, counsel, what's your pleasure? Do you want to go ahead and make, somebody make a motion or recommendation, or do you want to go ahead and do this by ballot, or how would you like?
I would make a recommendation, we do by ballot.
Oh, by ballot.
Want to do it by ballot, or you just want to do it by motion?
Well...
I'll make a motion for Darren, if you want to do it that way.
I don't know. It'd be fine.
Uh, it'll be all right?
You make the motion, yeah.
Yeah, there's a motion.
Yes.
There's a motion.
Uh, to support Darren Rumbold to be appointed.
Darren Rumbold?
Yes.
There's a motion for Darren Rumbold. Is there a second for Darren Rumbold? Okay, then...
I'll make a motion that Richard Ferrara be our person to take the restore position.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second for, I'll call him Councilman Ferrara, Councilman Ferrara. Is there any other comment? Let's go ahead and roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Carl, what else do you have for us?
Briefly, I placed at your places tonight, something with a horrid green on it, like this. This is a proposed proclamation that the county would like to pass with regards to the five-hundredth anniversary of the state's birthday, and they want to know if the council, if the city would like to participate in this process, which I would certainly recommend, and also whether or not any of you would like to attend this. I do believe, the mayor has indicated that he is able to attend this, and it's on May twenty-first, the Board of County Commissioners meeting at nine-thirty AM. And any of the rest of you would certainly be welcome to attend as well.
For all you out there, it's not actually the birthday of our state. It's when Ponce de Leon actually landed here and discovered it.
Was born before that.
I guess, did he just run into it? I think he just ran into it and...
He ran into an arrow in Benita Springs.
That's the way I discover things.
Could you say his name again?
I make a motion to participate.
Oh, there's a motion to participate? And there's a second? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
All right, Carl, what else you got?
The last item I have is just to announce to the council that on Monday, May the sixth, at one-thirty PM, the city of Benita Springs is on the agenda for the Board of County Commissioners' Management and Planning Meeting, their M&amp;P meeting. I will be giving a presentation with regards to our proposed CRA. The mayor and I have both met, actually separately, with each of the commissioners, but this is the formal presentation. We're hoping, coming out of that meeting, that we will get direction from the commission to county staff to blue-sheet this for a decision to delegate certain powers to the city to create a CRA. So, it's been a long time in coming, but that's where we're at. I would love to have elected official backup on that in the audience.
It's up to you all. One day will not make a significant difference, significant difference to us, but I did want to let y'all know, it'll be at 9:00 a.m., consistent with the prior years, and it can be a full day. So if, just keep in mind, if you select Monday, that'll be Monday morning, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, so to speak, or Tuesday, whichever day, we're at y'all's discretion.
Bright-eyed and bushy-tailed is my special.
I don't wake up till Tuesday, so, yeah, I don't know.
That's why she just...
Good, Monday.
But if it goes on Monday, it would be, it would be replacing the meeting that was previously scheduled there. So, y'all may already have that as a placeholder in your schedule, the city council zoning. Have you spoken with the attorney?
See, there, it's like replacing a zoning meeting, so there you have it.
Yeah, good.
Is there a motion to do it on the 15th?
Yes.
Yep, so moved. Is there a second? And there's a second from Bill. Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Sackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Carl, what else do you have for us?
Briefly, I placed at your places tonight, something with a horrid green on it, like this. This is a proposed proclamation that the county would like to pass with regards to the, the 500th anniversary of the state's birthday. And they want to know if the council, if the city would like to participate in this process, which I would certainly recommend, and also whether or not any of you would like to attend this. I do believe, the mayor has indicated that he is able to attend this, and it's on May 21st, the Board of County Commissioners meeting at 9:30 a.m. And any of the rest of you would certainly be welcome to attend as well.
For all you out there, it's not actually the birthday of our state, it's when Ponce de Leon actually landed here and discovered it.
Was born before that.
Did I mistake that? I guess, did he just run into it? I think he just ran into it and...
He ran into an arrow in Benita Springs.
That's, that's the way I discover things.
Could you say his name again?
I make a motion to participate.
Oh, there's a motion to participate?
Second.
And there's a second? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Sackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
All right, Carl, what else you got?
The last item I have is just to announce to the council that on Monday, May the 6th, at 1:30 p.m., the city of Benita Springs is on the agenda for the Board of County Commissioners' Management and Planning Meeting, their M&amp;P meeting. I will be giving a presentation with regards to our proposed CRA. The mayor and I have both, both met, actually separately, with each of the commissioners, but this is the formal presentation. We're hoping, coming out of that meeting, that we will get direction from the commission to county staff to blue-sheet this for a decision to delegate certain powers to the city to create a CRA. So, it's been a long time in coming, but that's where we're at. I would love to have elected official backup on that in the audience. I think it makes a difference to the commissioners to see your lovely faces.
Yeah, I would, I would...
All of us.
Renderate, the more commissioner, councilperson's we can have there, out in the audience, the better.
Okay, so make a date.
This is important.
Right, so 1:30 on Monday, we would love to see you all there, if at all possible.
May 21st, 1:30.
1:30. And we are first on the agenda, by the way.
We have...
So, we should be able to do it and get out of there if we need to. If we need, only if we need to.
We have every expectation that they will pass this.
God, that's so cool, Ben.
Are so helpful.
So, May 21st is a day for 9?
Pardon me?
May 21st at 9:30 and 1:30.
No.
No.
No, May 21st at 9:30 is the proclamation.
Right.
And May 6th, Monday, May 6th, at 1:30 is their M&amp;P.
Thank you.
On the CRA.
May 6th is...
So, how many people do we have?
Monday.
I'm gonna be there.
Can, can we, can we arrange for some carpooling?
Yeah, absolutely. We'd be happy to haul you up there. Yeah, we can do that.
Why don't you, everybody, call Carl and you can ride with Carl. Anyway.
In my Prius.
Got a Toyota?
You're all welcome.
Took care of that.
I have some space in the back.
Decision-making there.
It's like a Flintstone car, you gotta go.
Carl, what else do you have for us?
That's all I have, mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mayor and councilmember items, we're going to discuss action taken at the Library Task Force meeting. I'm betting that's probably Bill.
Thank you, Ben, Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
You were just talking about length of time in reference to the CRA. From the Library Task Force point of view, we've been along a little longer road, and I see Sheldon's in the audience tonight, thank you for coming. And Larry Keiker was at the meeting, and he has given us an opportunity to participate with the possibility of them putting $50,000 into the budget for the study for a library here in Benita Springs. So, I would like to offer up the, would hope that we could agree to allow them to consider our, putting it on the agenda for the future. But other than that, I thought the meeting went well. I think the people on the board, on the, on the Library Task Force are extremely helpful. Larry Keiker, again, like I said, I've worked with him for a short time, but I find him to be very open. He doesn't necessarily march to any particular drummer, but he certainly knows his way around from my perspective, as of watching him in action. And of course, always, Sheldon always makes sure that we hear from the county in terms of what he has planned to start or to bring up at the, obviously, their budget hearings. So, I'm pleased to see we're moving along.
Okay, Bill, just briefly, I mean, the Task Force recommended the study. What exactly would that entail?
Well, that, that's going to be paid by the county to, to, maybe I'm not, maybe I'm missing something.
John?
They're gonna study the building or...
Assessing.
Assessing, I guess.
What, what are they gonna determine?
The county library staff has established a procedure that they're comfortable with. It's something that they did most recently before they entered into the partnership with the city of Fort Myers for the, the building that's going up right now. And that is that they have these folks come in to do a series of things. One is to, most importantly, probably, is to reach out to the community, to find out what the expectations of the community are in particular, in terms of what they want the facility to, to accomplish, to do. Based on that, then, they also analyze what the options are in terms of locations. Size, of course, is gonna depend on the answer to the first question, what do you want it to do, and what does the, the community expect from this project? They put that together and they come up with a recommendation as to what the clearest path is to build something that hopefully then will meet the community's expectations, be able to fit in the available spots, and of course, be, makes sense from a financial point of view. The system has worked for them before, they're comfortable with that process. We didn't want to deviate from that process if it's something that we think will get us closer to the, the final product that we want. So, the idea would be to recommend that they put those dollars aside in the 2013, 2014 fiscal year budget. They have every intention, if that money is there then, to go ahead and get that study accomplished. We'll be working very closely with whoever they hire to do that, so that we have people like our friends at the library and the Library Task Force involved in the, the process. And hopefully, before the end of the next fiscal year, we'll have a result from that pro, from that study, and they'll have a tool that they can use to go forward with building.
Okay, yes, Martha?
Yeah. I know we spent about $30,000 doing a library assessment in 2006, and then we did a change order later on to create and design something that we thought would be, with Johnson Engineering, which I know is a firm that the county respects as well. I don't know if they can save a little money. I understand there's design plans here and the location is different, because we talked about having the libraries on Old 41 at the community hall site, and actually building a community hall in it with the deputies, with the sheriff's office, and the tax collector, and, you know, floating that, that idea out there to save the county some money in that way, which I still think is a great idea, but, so this will be design work? They don't really need to do the assessment part, 'cause the assessment needs ratio per thou, you know, per population hasn't changed, right?
Actually, that has, and this is something that we learned from Sheldon, is that the standards that the Johnson Engineering study worked off of may not be the most current and the most viable in terms of population to size, to size of facility. Sheldon, I'm sure, can speak to it in greater detail, but my understanding is that, well, the Johnson study will be a tool that they can use. It really needs to be looked at with these fresher eyes through different standards.
And, and of course, we can make that information that we've already gathered available...
Oh, and it has been, they're familiar with it, they have copies of it.
Okay, good, good. And Bill, did you want to make a motion that we support that? Or, I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
So, this in, in theory is gonna commit us for another year, if not two, to staying in the Lee County library system.
The, the...
And not going it alone, exploring that possibility to manage your own money.
That's true. The Task Force has not indicated in any way to me or the group that they, they still want to stay within the library system, so I have basically not raised too much hell. The fact is that the problem we have, or the county has, is their operating budget, obviously, is $7 million in the red, and, and they also, and they, that's been going on for a few years, but the mill rate was reduced from 96 cents, I think, six years ago, or seven years ago, down to 35 cents. In our particular case, we've obviously still paid in a much more money than, than most places, I think, and there's, there's the possibility that they're going to go for a mill rate increase, the magnitude which will be discussed in their budget hearings. So, to answer your question, Peter, I, I do think, I do think that if I, if I was king for a day, that we could also do the other way, but the Task Force has, has made the decision to go forward with the county, and I did not make any real serious objection other than to point out the facts. And I hope that this, but it looks like it's gonna be more than, more than a, it's gonna be like a long-term car payment before we get the end result, which I hope is a new library, and hopefully, which was also brought up at the meeting, which Martha just mentioned, about all the facilities that the county has in the city, that we, you know, we put it, put it all together, and the, actually, the county will save money in, in many ways. And that's, that was brought up at the meeting, and Sheldon heard it too, and I think it's, it's something that if I was in charge of it, I would certainly consider doing all those things, because it makes sense.
Good, Bill, so, you go ahead.
And what other cities in Lee County participate in the Lee County library system? Or, ask it another way, which cities or towns do it on their own?
Fort Myers and Sanibel.
Do it on their own.
Fort Myers Beach.
Fort Myers Beach. Fort Myers Beach, excuse me. And of course, the, the other thing is, if you look at Fort Myers Beach, their library tax is 59 cents, as composed, compared to our 35 cents right now, so they pay, of course, their tax base is a lot smaller than ours is too. So, the best thing to do is, based on the Library Task Force, is to go along with what their, their Task Force voted on, and we'll see how it works out. If it doesn't work out, we can always do the, and I know it's been a long time for everybody, and I, things that are worthwhile sometimes take more time.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes, Steve?
Not that I need to defend Councilman Longheart in any way, but the, the two cities that were mentioned came into their own library system under some very unique circumstances, each one of them, that we don't have available to us, first of all. So, if you don't go way back in the history, you don't get it. And I think the Task Force has done an admirable job of getting us to where we are today.
They have.
And I certainly second the motion.
Can we have a little more discussion?
Yes, go right ahead.
Are we, is the Task Force still married to, because if we spend this 50, or we spend as a county taxpayer, if the county commission spends $50,000, it'll be specific to that site. And I know, talking about the, and maybe I'm wrong, I'm correct, no, incorrect. Awesome, okay, like it. Because I know it's great to have it where the schoolchildren are, but there's more schoolchildren around the city than just at the middle school, so, you know, to have that combination of different offices of the county in one building, it's gonna, I think, take a bigger sight, just for parking alone.
But, John, the study's not gonna assume, begin assuming anything.
Nothing. As a matter of, just the opposite.
Good.
As I tried to indicate, use is really gonna be the primary function. You know, what is this thing gonna be? What does the community expect it to be, to accomplish? What is, what's the purpose? What's the function of a new library? Because they are very different than some of the old theories of what a library was.
Yeah.
That, again, will dictate the size, and size will dictate possibly where it could be cited, the different locations that are available. Throw into that the mix whether or not it needs to be cited along with other county facilities, and you've got a lot of things that are all gonna be looked at at once.
Yeah, I just know when we spent that extra money for the library study, you know, part of, part of the interest was Old 41 redevelopment, because, you know, people use libraries a lot, and then you had those other offices where people would be coming to use those offices as well. And then throw in a community hall, because we'd be raising that in order to put up a, a building if we use that site, and anyhow, I hope they take those things into consideration, what we've discussed here, and, and because we'll be hopefully participating with a CRA, that that will be to their benefit as well.
Martha, it's gonna be a very public process, and I'm sure that everyone, including us, is gonna have a say and be able to...
Sure.
Interject our opinions in it.
Now, we've just done a long time on this thing.
Sure, yeah, we're gonna, and we're gonna be a little longer.
Yep.
You have one more question?
And at the moment, Benita Springs is still a donor to the library. In other words, we send more to Lee County than we receive back.
Absolutely.
We, we always hear, you send more to Washington than you get back, so we do send more to the county than we get back.
In this case, absolutely.
Well, the, the other point, Peter, is that if, in fact, the mill rate is increased to what I think it's going to be raised to, we're going to be paying about between four and five million if it goes up to what the, the county anticipates, so that's a big number.
Significant increase, yeah.
Big number.
That's a nice building.
It's 2.4 million now, I think, is where it is now, and, but it's gonna go up dramatically. If it goes from 35 cents to 60 cents, it's a big number.
Yeah, and Bill, I, I really appreciate you respecting the, the work of this committee. I mean, that's why we've got one.
Yeah, I realize that.
So, I mean, did you give that public comment? Thank you so much.
Well done, sir.
We've all got our personal opinions on it. Either way, we, we want a library or don't want a library, this is a good way to go. Is there a motion still?
Sure.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? And this is just to encourage the county to go ahead and spend the $50,000, put it in a budget.
We will send, once again, the minutes from this meeting, as well as the resolution that you passed about a month ago.
Thank you very much. Roll call.
Councilman Sackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Councilwoman Simons?
No.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, do you have anything else for us, Carl? Anything else? No? Oh, Bill, I'm sorry.
Counselor.
Another phone call.
Oh, no, I've said enough.
Bingo, you said enough? Fine. Steve, what do you got for us today?
I do just one thing for the council, a piece of information about the wonder gardens that I hadn't made public until tonight. I've had conversations with Dawn and Dave Piper. I think we're, we all have the same objective, and that is to protect a very unique asset for the city, for our grandkids, grandkids. The way we get there is gonna be different. I had, as I mentioned to you, I'd had the officers from Florida Gulf Coast University in, in there several times. Most recently, last Monday, I had, last Friday, I had Dr. Veledi, who's the head of the Environmental Studies Group and dean of the, and coming dean of the Arts and Science College, and he, he and Vice President Finance, Steve McGarrett, they had a cabinet meeting then, shortly after that, and the cabinet decision was that they really cannot take that facility on for several reasons, primarily financially. That hasn't really deterred me from that, but I'll step back. I have, I have had conversations with Judy Collier-Sprohl from the Naples Botanical Garden, and she was instrumental in that and several other projects in that area. She has set me up with someone who can help us take a look at the wonder gardens and see if it really makes sense as a botanical garden. And finally, I've met, met with and meeting, continue to meet with people who are professional fundraisers to talk about potential foundations and other ways to raise private money to help that, us protect that for the citizens in the future. So, I don't want to do anything below what this council knows I'm doing, and I will certainly keep that going and public. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Janet, what do you got? Oh. Kathy stole your fire in the thunder, didn't she?
No, not at all. Not at all. I, I...
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Sackton?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Just a reminder, it's still a little bit ways away, but we're gonna have Memorial Day services at 9 o'clock on the 27th, which is a Monday, May. And Carl, I, and that'll be at 9 o'clock. And Carl, I just wanna echo a little bit what Kathy had to say. I've had the marvelous experience of working with two of your staff, particularly Laura and Patrick, and they're so cooperative and so willing to produce. I know, I know Laura had a great mentor with Arlene, but, but they are just absolutely fantastic to deal with. It's just a pleasure, and I want you to know that.
All right, thank you very much. Peter, what do you have for us today?
I'm, I'm okay.
You're good?
I'm good, thank you.
I'll make up for everybody.
Councilwoman Simons?
Oh, boy.
Okay, one, I met a gentleman named Lars Soderquist, who was with the USGIS at the Imperial River Gage up by Kent Road while I was up there with Dallas Revord, having lunch on the Benita Trail. And I will be meeting with, pretty soon, one of the Board of Directors of the Florida Trail Association. It's something I want to just run past council, I know I've run this past the crew members, but we've talked about being gateway to crew, and I've always seen that as a bigger picture of being gateway to the Florida Trail. They don't have a western extension, and basically, it goes to Oilwell Road, which I think crew goes down there, but we could really, if we would think about it, make the Benita Trail part of the Florida Trails Association, which would be put on state maps and things like that, and people come to Benita, ecotourism, all those things we dream about. Let you know that. Okay. Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council will be having an executive shade meeting. My first executive shade meeting, how exciting. And, which means that there's like no minutes, oh, there's minutes, but there's like no public, because this will be on security concerns, like public water, you know, homeland security type stuff. If there's anything that either our staff or the council would like me to discuss that it's of concern to you, I guess, send it to Carl, and, you know, I'll bring it forward to them. Anything that's been on your mind about security. That can be in the building, I guess, but I think it's more of a regional security issue, okay? All right. The Florida League of Cities President, Manny Monroño, is going to be at the May 16th Florida League of Cities, Southwest Florida League of Cities lunch, the veranda, da-da-da-da. Anybody'd like to attend, let Rudy Bush know. I'd like to thank also our community policing unit, of which we don't have one here, do we?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we do, okay.
Judge back there.
No, I don't see him here. Okay, well, we're nice and safe. We are nice and safe, because we were number six on that list, safer than those other cities around here, Naples. And anyhow, thank them for helping to get rid of some crime in the neighborhood. They did a great job. Thank you, guys. You're tough and you're good.